Let's call this meeting to order. Ms. G, can we get a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes. Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teeds?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. Lotterson is absent.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Do we have any planning commissioner reports tonight? No? Okay. Well, we were just downstairs seeing an overview of the... I don't think I can remember all of it. It's pedestrian, bicycle, traffic calming.
Yes, I've gone to a bunch of meetings about the pedestrian, bicycle, traffic calming committee. And we just heard a long presentation from the planning staff. And there'll be several meetings. I don't have them remembered exactly. They're in my calendar. Over the next several weeks, there's numerous meetings. One of them, most importantly, is the April 19 public meeting for people of the community to make comments, hear their presentation and make comments about what they think. And as someone who was involved in this, would really appreciate to hear those comments and hopefully improve upon what is already, I think, a very good plan.
And the planning commission will see again on May 7 for our recommendation to council. So that's another public meeting where people could comment. Anything else?
Lots of opportunity for public comment. There's several meetings.
Also, the council meetings, lots of... Okay, Ms. G, do we have any receipt of petitions, any emails or anything on items on the agenda?
I have none.
Thank you. And Mr. Snyder, would you like to do the planners' directors' report?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We, as you know, have been working hard on the small area plans and we have confirmed the open house that will be held this Saturday at Columbia Baptist Church, 9:30 to 11:00, hosted by yourselves and also economic development's been invited. We expect some of the city council will be there. We'll be presenting the report and gathering and listening to comments from the public. So as many of you as can be there, we'd like to try to get a head count on that. Hope to start at 9:30, so if we can be there a little ahead of time, we'll be in the same room. And wanted to thank Columbia Baptist for doing that, being able to make that available. So that's this Saturday, the 24th.
You said you wanted a head count?
Well, if folks can be there, that'd be great. Those who can't, we'd like to know too, so.
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay. You all were very helpful at the kickoff meeting and this is kind of our return to talk to the neighbors and the people in the area.
And I'd already told you I'd be in Colorado, so Mr. Lawrence will speak for the planning commission as vice chair.
So if you all have questions, please feel free to contact myself, Ms. G, this week, okay? And we are scheduled to come back to the city council on the 14th of May. We're getting this out to boards and commissions and other groups. Hopefully, that date can hold. It's a pretty tight timeframe, but we're shooting for that as well. We have been working with council of governments and it appears as though we're going to be represented on the evolving activities center map that's being developed, the update to it. There's a regional map that identifies activity centers. We had meetings with COG staff, helping them understand our small area planning and how that collectively makes us a place that is important in the larger context of the region. And it looks like they're going to come up with a methodology that lets smaller communities be identified on these regional maps, which I think is a good thing. And we were able to have a good dialogue with COG staff who came out and met with us here at Paul's Church. We are looking also at, and I'll get into this a little bit later, but we are looking at trying to have a real update with some of the regional staff, particularly in demographics, and that'll be either in late May or early June. We had a meeting with the regional groups and there's a lot of talent and expertise there that we want to try to take advantage of. So I'll keep you posted on that, but Gary Fuller's been coordinating a session along with economic development that'll happen in either late May or early June. So we'll keep you posted on that. That's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Ms. Hockenberry?
Quick things. As I mentioned downstairs, we're going to probably, with this plan that's being proposed, we're going to have to really think about such things as setbacks and get that into gear and get that small piece that we've been talking about so that it coordinates with this and with anything else that's in this plan. Because I'm sure that this sidewalk width will definitely stay in, so we need to think about the rest of the setbacks. And then again, doing some more work in getting the lead policy up and going before we have to come into contention with any developers.
I do believe the commission should have gotten copies of... We got a response from the schools. And if you don't have that, I've got copies of that for you, but there was a letter that came from their architects and a lead scorecard as well that I think was made available at the work session with city council and school board and yourselves. So if you don't have that, let me know, but we do have copies of that.
I received the email with the documents attached. Has everyone else received that?
No.
No?
I got the hard copy at the meeting.
Oh, that's funny. The email came out to all of us, I believe.
I got the email with the copies on it.
It may have been from Ms. Mester because I think she was...
I think it was.
Yeah, she was disseminating it to all the different groups. When I get home, I'll check and I'll forward it.
Hard copies I can...
I got the letter at the meeting.
Yeah. I'll be happy to give those to you at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
But I'll forward the email to anyone who didn't get it, so you have an electronic copy.
It would be just that I haven't checked my email.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Snyder, Mr. Lawrence?
Sorry, I don't know if you said this later when Lyndy was talking. Do we have a site plan for TJ yet?
It has not. I don't believe it's been filed yet. We should be, we hope, this week.
Okay, because you also hoped last week.
I understand.
Okay.
And I'll let you know as soon as it happens.
Did the council pass the property maintenance code?
The council did pass the property maintenance code, including the commission's changes. And also, we made a couple of little tweaks to make clear that properly maintained rain barrels are not... Make it positively clear that those are not affected by this ordinance. So they did approve that and we're looking to implement that 1st of May.
Okay, good.
Thank you for your input on that. It was very helpful.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, I'm going off that topic.
Well, can I go on that topic?
Please, yeah.
Speaking of that, is that... That doesn't go into effect until May 1st of this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something that we can use to get the state theater to clean up their front yard?
I thought you were going to say you had that long to clean up your backyard.
No, 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 no. I'm hiding everything in my backyard, in the shed.
As long as it's behind trucks.
In the shed.
I know they're undergoing some renovations internally. I'll have to take a look at that, but we want to get word out to people and also make sure we're ready to go on the 1st of May, so I'll take a look at that.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because for many years, they just didn't... You know, they had a plan, a landscaping plan. They never did anything and just kind of deteriorated, deteriorated. I haven't looked at it lately, but my question is, is that something that we can use to do things in that situation?
Well, I'd have to look at it specifically, but primarily, it has to do with people leaving junk and unmaintained materials in parking lots and in their yard areas. If you look at some of the parking lots and some of the commercial areas, there's that kind of thing going on in the back parts of parking lots. So it would depend on what the condition is. We can take a look at it.
But it will apply to businesses as well as...
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So if they hadn't cleaned up their front yard, as a homeowner hadn't cleaned up his or her front yard, they would be subject to this ordinance as well?
Yes, if it met the standards of the ordinance, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I believe the state theater's issue is that they're not meeting their landscaping requirements based on their site plan, which is also something that can be dealt with, separate from property maintenance. It's just that their site plan is not current.
There's always a lot of trash in the front yard.
Well, there's also trash.
It's been on the list forever. I mean, as far as being noncompliant.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking if we're going to go after homeowners, we should definitely go after...
Well, I think it's an absolute mess up there, that's for sure.
Ms. Lawrence, do you have other questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. What's the status with Fulton Avenue? Is that still proceeding? No bumps or...
As far as I know, that is still proceeding. I haven't heard any change in terms of it moving forward as we reported last time. As far as I know, that contract's going through. Ms. G, have you seen anything come through to the Harb for the expansion of the older home?
I have not, but if you did not see it in last week's news press, the ad was there, I think, on the inside front cover, listing the price at which that property sold, so I assume the contract has gone through.
Oh, okay. Yeah, apparently, none of us read closely.
I have recognized the house from the picture. It looked very nice.
And my last question is, in the budget meetings, you know, Wyatt keeps talking about funding two new positions in planning and development. What exactly will that fund? Do you know, or have you just been told you've got, you know, two FTEs and...
Well, I appreciate you asking that question. And actually, we're having our budget work session this Thursday evening with council. We have asked for a position that would be a GIS and planning specialist. This is something that would enable us to continue to have the person who's presently employed by the city, Mr. Kitt, who is one of the major people putting this plan together, available as a permanent employee. And he has a master's in city planning and environmental planning from Virginia Tech, plus a certificate of GIS and a degree from Old Dominion. So a great combination of skills that lets you do this kind of work. And that's a specialized kind of position. The other position is a comprehensive planner. We really have not had long-term comprehensive planning here in the city. And this person would be focusing on updating the comprehensive plan and then also providing additional support to our transportation planning program, which is extensive, but we have a very small staff. Wendy Block Sanford's been doing a great job of that. And also filling in, as need be, on zoning ordinance amendments and current planning projects as we get more projects coming through. The major focus would be to help get us up to date in updating our comprehensive plan, which, as you all know, is out of date and we need to get into compliance with the state requirement updated every five years, and we're behind schedule on that. We've been trying to do it piece by piece, but that's... We will be better off as a community to have a long-range comprehensive planning person doing that work.
You started your answer by saying, well, what we've asked for. So is this what you're still hoping it is, or is this what Wyatt told you you're getting? I'm just curious.
We asked for that and that's what I recommended or asked for, and that's what has been included in the budget. We think that that will give us a lot more capability and will help us do the kind of area planning that we know we're going to need to do. And we set it out last year, actually, we talked about even doing it on a quick basis as we've done this time. It's about a four- or five-year process to do the eight areas. And then the comp plan needs to be updated and we hope we will have development projects that'll be coming through that will keep us busy as well. And of course, we have ZOAC and zoning ordinance amendments that need to be done. So it's doing the combination of those planning efforts, focusing on the small area plans and the comp plan, but having additional capacity to fill in and do those other important pieces as well.
Okay, so you've been told that's what it's for? Good.
Well, that's what I asked for and the manager supported that and other staff supported that, so.
Okay, would it be of any... Well, actually, I think we should just ask that Thursday.
Yeah.
I'm not going to ask you whether you think we should. That'd get you in trouble.
Well, it has been supported. It's in the manager's budget and we certainly appreciate the support of the commissioners and others in recognizing the value of doing this kind of planning. We think it sets the stage and helps people understand what can happen in the city and we think it'll pay long-term dividends to the city in terms of tax base and the ability of the city to afford the other good things that are needed in a community.
Okay, any other... Oh, Ms. Hockenberry?
I want to draw on John's question. In support of this, the two new planning positions, I know one of the big questions is, that I've heard the most, is how will it help economic development? And, you know, whether to put staff in the economic development office or planning. Can you see where any of those positions might indeed, other than the small area plans and things like that, help out in economic development also?
Well, we've been trying to work closely with economic development on our projects. And last year, if you remember, when we did the... When we took the snapshot of the, what's the condition of the eight opportunity areas, particularly looking at the fiscal situation, the values, land building values, and realized how... What difficult circumstances we're in here in the city and how much room for improvement there is, which is bad news and good news. Good news is there's, you know, if we can turn things around, we'll be in much better shape. So I think we know from experience that developing these small area plans or sector plans, as they've been done in other places, helps the development community and the investment community understand what can happen in an area. And that, properly handled with appropriate planning and review of projects by citizens, commissions and council, will lead us, over time, to an improved community in each of these areas. That will create a lot more value for the city and the citizens and will help us support, you know, the public services that are so important here in the city. So I think it is, in effect, when you do long-term planning of good quality, it is a... It's some of the best economic development infrastructure, if you will, that you can do because it gives people more certainty about what the future might be and helps them understand what they should be trying to do on a particular piece of property.
I think those issues need to be, you know, mentioned in support of it and just to make sure that, you know, the whole knowledge that the economic development office and the planning are working very closely together because that, I think, is a very important two-pronged approach to the future.
Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? I do want to mention, while we have on our schedule that we don't have a formal meeting on April 2nd because it's during spring break and several of us are going to be out of town, that we have had, as you guys have seen, that the CIP review with the council has been scheduled for April 2nd. So if any of the planning commissioners are in town, it would be very helpful if you guys can go to that meeting. And I understand that Ms. Mester, who worked with us with the CIP, will also be there and she says she obviously knows our position and we worked our changes out with her, so she would be there to help present it. So I just want to mention that because on here, we didn't mention on the future anticipated item, but you have received emails about it.
I would mention, we are still trying to come up with a location at TJ for a meeting on Greenway Downs on the 23rd of April. We're not sure if that's going to happen there. So Ms. G has today put a reservation in for the Dogwood Room as a possible location for a work session where we could simply invite people to attend, so we could talk about the possible changes there that were outlined in some earlier documents that council and the planning commission looked at for an overlay district there to help solve some of the non-conforming situations there. So we'll keep you posted on that, but I think I spoke with Chair last week about if we can't do it at TJ, we can simply do it here. It's a small... We're a small city and it's not far to come.
Exactly. So I guess pencil in April 23rd. Are we talking about in the morning perhaps, or...
Well, we're looking at evening, I believe.
Oh, it's the evening. It's Monday, you're right. Sorry.
It's a work session, I believe. And we also talked the possibility of whether it would be useful to invite maybe the AAB to participate in that as well, given, you know, you're talking about building design and architecture potential.
No, I think that would be great to invite the AAB.
Now, is TJ just not getting back to you, or... I mean, it seems odd that you've been trying, obviously, for a while.
I have been trying to contact the facility manager and his voicemail indicates that the best way to reach him is through email, and I have sent several emails. We have sort of a wishy-washy confirmation, but not a firm confirmation or that they can provide the setup that we've requested.
And this would be in the cafeteria space?
In the gym at TJ School.
And frankly, as we've thought, we may be better off in the Dogwood Room where we have audiovisual and we can show slides and it's a decent-sized room for a meeting like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, you've done town hall meetings on the TJ expansion in the cafeteria with slides before.
Wherever it works at, it'll be fine. I think we all...
We want to keep it moving and...
Right. It's good. The most important thing is have the meeting so we can go through the overlay and what we're suggesting and get the comments from, so we can move on with that project.
And thank you all for resending those contact names to us. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, I don't see any old business, so we're going to move on to new business. Comprehensive plan update, we're looking at the historic preservation chapter and so we'll be holding a public meeting today and we're going to grant preliminary approval to the chapter as the first step in adopting the complete comprehensive plan update. So I guess we have a staff report. I know we've seen this before and we gave comments at that time.
You have. Just to be very brief, the planning commission adopted a resolution to officially kick off the comprehensive plan review and update on September 7, 2010. Last year, in October, the commission, in a work session, looked at the historic preservation edits to bring it more up to date. And staff acknowledged that we're really kind of swamped and can't possibly meet all the goals and strategies in the current plan. And went to the Historic Architecture Review Board in January of this year and they wanted to provide or support three goals, each of which have several strategies to achieve. And so that's the document we're providing to you tonight. It's not been formatted. The pictures haven't been added or any of the things that will make it nice and readable to others, but just wanted to get your preliminary approval tonight so we can kind of put this on the shelf until all the other chapters are done, bring them back in final format to you at that time.
Ms. G, does anyone have questions for Ms. G at this point? I... Oh, Ms. Rogers?
I just, reading through this, I noticed only two areas that were highlighted. One was in the vision and that was highlighted, and then there was one other cross-out. Are those the only changes that were made to the previous chapter?
It's page 11?
I think that that was just left over that I didn't pick it up to delete.
Yeah, no, I think it's each of the goals.
So that's going to be deleted?
No, no. It was just highlighted in the previous version and I simply forgot to remove that mark.
Okay, so I guess then my question is, this doesn't show what's been changed from the last?
No, you saw that in October.
Okay, so now my question is about, on page 18, Appendix 9-2. Are the properties that we are talking about possibly decertifying, particularly the one that I know is coming up, is that noted anywhere on here?
It is not because that has not... A staff report has been prepared based on the council's work session where they agreed to consider that as legislation and they have not yet scheduled that for a hearing.
I was just thinking it might be helpful to have these highlighted in some way, maybe a little asterisk and then a footnote, just saying that these are the properties that are being considered. And then, on page 6, the second paragraph from the bottom, where it says, "To date, no proposals for bread and breakfast have been received by the city." I thought we had received one proposal. It was denied, but we have received one. It was on Little Falls Street?
You're correct.
And then, my last comment is kind of picky, but it's on page 10. It's in the second to the last paragraph where it says, "However, given limited financial and staff resources, it's unlikely that many will be accomplished within the life of the plan." I think that's really a negative thing to have in our comp plan and would like to see that removed. I mean, I don't think we have to kind of whine about not having the resources. I think it would be better to just ignore that, realize that we have lowered our expectations somewhat, and then move on rather than bringing that to people's attention. But that's just my opinion.
I agree with you. I think that is a good point. And, you know, I guess in terms of needing resources, that's a battle that needs to be fought somewhere, not in the comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, question?
Other than that, great job.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Lawrence?
Just a couple of quick things. On page 6, under the first large paragraph, starting with "following the completion of", it says that the Harb asked the city to give it definitive authority over alterations rather than just advisory input. Has anything ever... I mean, it sounds like it was asked. Was it refused, or is it just sort of in limbo because...
It's in limbo. Council has not taken any action on that.
That was on the last study.
Okay, so it's... Okay, so not turned down, just nothing done? Okay. It's unfortunate.
I don't think at the time anybody... That's always a sticky issue that comes up every time it's reviewed. And I think people just didn't want to fight it at the time. Again, this was, what, five years ago when we dealt with it on council? Yeah.
Right. Council had appointed a preservation partners task force and the task force had made that recommendation, among others. And council just said, "Thank you so much for your work."
Yeah. Nobody wanted to take that part on because it's so controversial.
Okay.
And it's the second time.
Because they tried this, what, even back around 2000?
Yeah.
And that got to be so controversial.
They decided to not follow up on that.
Okay, well, actually, related to that, on page 8, where it talks about, you know, in terms of the ordinance, resident qualifies for protection and built before 1910, and where it says, you know, there may be objections by the property owner. And if they object, what? I mean, can a property be designated over their objections? Does it just draw it out more? Or if they object, does it not happen?
The criteria that was used before the property, the structure was built in or before 1910. So if the homeowner has other evidence that that is not the case, then they can make the case to have it decertified because it doesn't meet the code criteria. So we've not had that challenge thus far.
Oh, so they would be proving that what the city thought was actually true wasn't true, not saying, "We agree it's true. We still object and we don't want you to..."
They would have to say... They would have to object by saying that they have other criteria or other documentation correct.
Okay, okay. And I did have one question since we went through the Fulton Avenue. On the same page at the end of the last paragraph where it says, you know, "The owner may demolish a structure after, you know, an attempt to sell it." And then it says, "Time periods for such offers vary by the value of the property." And I didn't realize that. I thought it was one year for anything.
Under federal legislation, there are three different price points. And the highest price point in the 1960s was a $90,000 property. And that number has never been changed. So in essence, anything in the city would require the one-year waiting period.
Okay. So this is a technicality that just never gets applied?
It is. The language is in our ordinance which mimics the federal legislation.
Right, no, it's a legal issue.
Should that be noted in this at all? No? As per federal regulation?
I don't see it changing anytime soon.
Okay.
Okay. And just on page 10, the paragraph Ruth was talking about, the next to the last one, where it says, "Thus ended the 2005 comprehensive plan." I mean, to me, I read that and I thought, oh, my God, did I just read what hadn't been changed since 2005? So... Okay, because that's not what you were trying to say, right? Because everything has been changed. That was the whole point of, you know, with the work you went through.
Yes, it had been changed. Yes, it had been changed. And we discussed this sentence at some length in October, but if you'd like other language, I'm happy to work on that.
Okay, I probably raised the same point in October and forgot that I had, but it just, it seemed, it was odd to me. So, yeah, I would suggest changing it.
Rogers, you had another question?
Yes. Going back to page six, should we talk about the last paragraph? Sorry. Page six, where we talk about in the last paragraph, the doctor's office from the Green Gables property. It says, "No permanent location has been determined." The doctor's office has been moved back onto the original property, so I think we should note that. Yeah.
I think that was a good catch. I'm ready. Any other... Okay, let's go with a motion, please.
Okay. I move that, move preliminary adoption of the historic preservation chapter as a first step to adopt the complete comprehensive plan update and also to hold public meetings, public hearings on the chapter.
Second.
Do we have any public comments on this issue? Are any speaker slips?
No, we have not.
Okay.
You know, we had presented it at work session, and the process that we had discussed at that time was to round out a chapter as extensively as possible, then preliminary approve it, put it on the shelf, and go back and take a final look when everything was done.
Right. I just want to make sure that we check, because that part of the action today was to hold a public hearing, so. And so seeing no public comments or any speaker slips, do we have any other comments or questions before we hold the vote here? So can we get a real call on this? Motion, please.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So now we have a presentation on demographic information on the City of Falls Church, and that was another piece in your packet, actually bigger piece. So, Mr. Snyder, are you going to go over this piece with us?
I'm going to go over it very briefly. Gary Fuller has been working on the update to the comp plan on demographics and also on housing. And he's put this together as a package for you all to have. We'll go into this in more detail when we have the meeting with Ken Billingsley, who's the regional demographer with the Northern Virginia Regional Group. And also, we hope to have someone from Economic Development, Steve Fuller, as a group like, from their group, to also give us an overview of what's going on. And that'll be in late May and in early June. They're looking at several dates that, to see which one will work for both of those. We have been participating in the updates with COG, and so that information is included in here. Our population, according to 2010 census, is 12,332. So at any rate, I'm not going to go into a detailed presentation on this, but I'd ask you to keep this, and as you have questions, looking at it, Mr. Fuller is happy to respond to those. And again, we'll be going into this in more detail when we have that update meeting. One of the thoughts was that, following that, we can then put together those chapters of the comp plan and bring those forward to the commission, demographics and housing together.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. I did find it really interesting, kind of going through this and looking at different facts. So unless anyone has questions right now, we'll be holding on to this, and we'll see this information used in the comprehensive plan as it goes forward.
And part of our reasons for bringing this to you is just so you know that we are involved regionally with this kind of activity. We're trying to be in touch with the regional planning groups and the COG, and those are good resources for us, and of course, they need our information as we need theirs. So our efforts to meet with the regional group and also with COG, we think are, well, one, it's a good thing to do, and two, it makes possible resources available to us. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Okay, so let's move on to other business. We have a presentation on residential zoning conformity that Mr. Snyder has put together for us, and he also gave us another handout up here. Ms. Lawrence?
Just, sorry, I should have paid more attention when we were doing the historic code. Just two other quick questions. The historical commission is going to be, the membership number is going to be decreased so that hopefully they'll be able to meet, right?
That's correct. Council's considering that resolution this evening.
Okay. The reason is, under one of the goals, it talked about, you know, the historical commission should evaluate all commercial structures. And I was just wondering, and obviously, I'm not going to ask that we, you know, go back and open it up again, but whether we should add, ask that when we do this finally, add the HARB into it. Because the commission literally hasn't met for two years. So hopefully, you know, decreasing the number of members will make it easier to get a quorum, but that just hit me that we had them as the people who should do it, and they just haven't been able to muster a quorum.
Correct.
So, and then the other question I had, and Jim, this is probably for you, under where they're maintaining, enhancing, and expanding, where it talks about, you know, an annual tour of each structure, this is on page 12, could we mandate that as part of the property maintenance code? I mean, could the property maintenance code be used to say, you know, "This does need to be done, and this is what we use to actually make it happen"?
On the historic side?
Yes.
I don't know. That's a good question. We do believe that the property maintenance code can help us where we have problems of historic properties or other properties in a deteriorating situation. So I think we certainly could use it if there's evidence of that going on with a piece of property.
Yeah, but the whole point of this is regular maintenance and upkeep and just attention would keep it from deteriorating and...
No, that's absolutely true. I guess I was responding to the thought of whether we would inspect every house in the course of a year or not.
Oh, no, no, no.
We certainly would want to look at any that, whether there were problems that have been identified as, you know, "We've got a maintenance issue here," or "There appears to be deterioration." So that certainly could be done under the property maintenance code. And I believe the historical commission and HARB were supportive of that as something that would be helpful in maintaining historic properties.
That's correct. And the HARB has a semi, not a semi annual, a bi-annual sidewalk inspection of each historic property. And then they will reach out to the property owners and say, you know, "We think this is something that needs to be fixed," like reattaching a gutter or something, you know, something minor, flaking paint, those kinds of things.
Also, in terms of coordinating the two groups, the small area plan, for example, the HARB and the commission will be meeting together, I think, to look at that and make, put their comments together from an efficiency point of view and also just getting that group, those two groups together as they look at the small area plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'll flip through all the pages before I say I have nothing left next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Okay, so we're going to move on to the report that Mr. Snyder provided us on residential zoning conformity. He had staff, I guess it was actually specifically Garrison Kitt, look at how many lots we have that are not conforming, and he wanted to have a discussion with us tonight about it. And so if you want to go ahead and present that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Building on the good work of the ZOAC group, we've continued to try to drill down and look at what's in fact happening here in the city. And with GIS tools, we've been able to look at where buildings are actually placed on the property. As you know, there was a lot of work done by ZOAC to look at the size of lots, their, how they conform with the standards in the R1A and the R1B zones in terms of size with that type of thing. There was interest from my, as I understand, to look, go further and begin to look at what's actually on the property. And that's what we've been able to do with Mr. Kitt's help. And there's a methodology that he used in terms of using GIS tools that's attached to this report. The surprising thing was that as we look at the lots here in the city, and these are the two single-family residential zones, there are some 2,223 parcels in the two zones. And we found that 554 of those, almost 25%, were found to be non-conforming in terms of the front yard setbacks. Well, one of, and one of the questions is, well, how, why is this the case? Well, as you know, the city has had a zoning ordinance beginning back in 1934, and then there have been subsequent changes, and the setback requirements have changed over time. And, but of course, buildings have been built throughout that period. And so buildings that were built in advance of the present code, which requires 30 feet of setback in an R1A and 25 feet in an R1B, may in fact, you may in fact have houses that are within the setback, so they're non-conforming in terms of the front yard setback. Then we were looking also at corner lots, where presently we have a rule where you have to have, you have two front yards on any corner lot. So some communities have, you know, you pick a frontage, maybe the narrow frontage or the wide frontage. A lot of communities, I think, it's the narrow frontage. But in any event, we presently have two front yards, so you have side yards. Many of the, there are quite a number of houses in these corner lots that are non-conforming. And if you look through the documents, there are some pie charts which show this, and also maps showing where these are located. In a case of corner lots in R1A, some 67% of them have houses that are non-conforming with regard to setbacks. In the R1B, it's not quite as much, but it's 51%. So collectively, what this says is we have a code and a built environment that don't match one another. And so this, in some regard, I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention as, well, what do we do? What are the implications? What are the unintended consequences of this situation? What should we do in terms of dealing with this? Because that's a large percentage to have existing buildings, existing houses, not match up with the zoning lines. Some of the things that happen here is if you have, for example, a single-story building, let's say a Cape Cod or a ranch-style house, it's very difficult to add a second story. You have to move back from the front setback line, perhaps put some kind of structural things inside to match whatever those setbacks are if you want to add a second-story addition. As you know, probably the least, the most cost-effective way to expand a house is to build on top of an existing foundation. It's also the greenest way in the sense of the least materials wasted or lost. So there is, there is kind of a situation where it places, we think, a stronger incentive for these buildings to be torn down and rebuilt with larger new homes than to be remodeled. And that can result in, as you've seen, in some cases, buildings being pushed back. There may be mature trees in yard areas that, you know, are disrupted. Typically results in a bigger house. And so one of our concerns is that kind of the lack of a level playing field so that existing houses and the people who live in them have the option to expand them as opposed to tear them down and rebuild them or leave them kind of frozen where they are. This has an impact on income diversity, you know, what kind of community we have. If you have streets where you have a lot of these things, you might, you could end up over time with these houses being taken down and redone. I kind of believe personally in a more organic approach where you allow properties to evolve over time. And the community I live in, in Delray in Alexandria, a lot of that has happened, where renovations have happened, second stories have happened, additions have been put onto the rear, and a lot of other things of that nature as opposed to tear downs. So there are some illustrations showing what can happen in terms of where these buildings might be and what happens with setbacks, and also maps showing where they're located. And they tend to be in kind of clusters. Also, I have shown an example of one fix that might be able to be used, and that has to do with the non-conforming portion of the ordinance, which, this is Division 5, Section 48-142, where presently you're allowed, where you have a non-conforming structure on the side or rear, you can go up or extend that line, but no further. The front, however, is not mentioned there. If that were, in theory, you could predict, you could do a second story along that same front line. The suggestion here would be that that be approved by the planning director in addition to zoning administration, and in, and that as an example, maybe the height be reduced. I think presently in the city, you can go to 35 feet. Well, if you're closer to the street, you don't want a building looming over. And so the suggestion there would be, well, have a limitation of 30 feet rather than 35 feet. Now, I'm not saying this is the answer. I'm just showing an example of one way to resolve this or provide more of a level playing field. There also could be the ability to send these things to the AAB for architectural input. But presently, there, I was surprised at the numbers, you know, to have a quarter of the inventory in this kind of a situation or close to a quarter of the inventory in this kind of a situation is unusual. And it really cries out for us to look at it and decide what kind of community we want, and is there an appropriate fix or amendment to the code? Or do we leave what we have in place and just let it evolve under the present ordinance? So I'm really hoping we can have a little bit of a work session with the commission now that we know more about the problem as we've drilled down into it, and like to get your thoughts and direction on this.
Well, this is a discussion, so I guess, I mean, do you, does anyone have comments at this point? Ms. Lawrence?
It's always me. On, I don't know what page it is, where you've got the suggested changes to the language. In 3B, the side setbacks you talk about, seven feet, 10 feet, is it really that small? I thought it was 15. It just struck me as very small setbacks.
Well, those are the, the language that's not underlined and bold is the present language, okay? So those are minimums that are in place. And if there is an addition on the, if an existing building has a side or rear line, it can continue that, but then these are, these are minimum limits. And let's see, you're looking at B, I believe? Is that correct?
Yeah, I just, they seem, they're smaller than I thought the setbacks were, so...
Well, and they are, they are smaller than what the code presently requires for a conforming situation. I did give you a handout which has, on the front page, the R1B and R1A, the side, front, and rear setbacks. And then behind that, there are some illustrations of the dilemma that you run into, that kind of illustrating what the situation could be. This is the present code now, so these are minimums that people would have to observe if they're extending a side or rear building line. And that's what, that's the present language.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to go on that, go. Sorry, a couple of quick things. We talked about not having buildings looming. I think that's a great idea. After, on D, I think you should add at the end whichever is shorter so that we don't have somebody trying to say that, you know, "This is only two and a half stories and it's 35 feet."
Yes.
Just cynical. And then, the last paragraph, where, you know, "However, the planning director and zoning administrator," my concern in reading this was, if you don't get both to agree, does that restrict the ability of the homeowner to go to the BZA for a variance if you guys can't agree on what to do? And I would just want to make it clear that, you know, if you couldn't agree, they would still have that recourse to go to the BZA and ask for a variance even if the two of you couldn't agree to either say yes or no. I just wouldn't want one person to be able to hold up the process, and then the homeowner, you know, sits there holding the bag with nothing they can do.
That's a, that's a good point. And the purpose here was to, you know, have a couple of levels of review in terms of looking at these things, so that we're looking not only at the technical side but at the bigger picture. So that's the point of having the planning director and zoning administrator both look at it, the technical side, and then the bigger picture. But I appreciate your point about the need for the homeowner to be able to go to the BZA, which they should be able to do.
Is this our, is this, this is not our work session? We'll do a work session later on this? Is that what you were saying?
I wanted to bring it to your attention because as we started doing this work and looking more into... looking more into ZOAC and drilling down, we just didn't know this information until we did this analysis. And I wanted to bring it to your attention and get your thoughts. We can have a more detailed work session in the future, but mainly I wanted to share the information with you, get your reactions and thoughts, and if you have directions, I'd like to hear that from the Commission.
Well, we, so this is my, would this, and you don't have to answer it now. So we've, I've always had this confusion, the word for the evening granularity. So now we have this granularity of the detail of this problem. And what I've always heard from homeowners who've been through this process is that our, our variance process is, is, is very messed up in that you have to determine that you have a hardship, whereas in other jurisdictions, you don't have to determine that you have a hardship, there's just a sort of a, a level of common sense, hey, you get a variance. And it's, it's a pretty straightforward process. Even in, for example, in Old Town Alexandria, you can get a variance because, you know, it would be better if I did this than that, and you don't have to demonstrate a hardship. At least that's how it's been explained to me. So if we had a work session, and you don't have to spend a lot of time with this tonight, my question is, are we spending a lot of time with the sort of larger issues, whereas if we just gave people the ability to cut, you know, the one that I will still remember is this issue with the deck, that the guy was missing the back deck, but like he couldn't go through the BZA for some, you know, it just seems like our process is broken, and we could spend a ton of time making these very complex ordinances and having to meet with the city council in these innumerable work sessions, which are painful to everyone, when really, if someone could just go and say, hey, can I have four feet to build a deck? We'd say, sure, that seems like a great idea. Everyone needs a deck. You'd be outside, it's good for you and your family.
Well, that is, I mean, that's the role the BZA has. My understanding, the hardship issue, and you're saying it's happened, it came down from the state, that these were, it was a state decision, and so.
I've heard varying, I mean, that's, that's what they always, they always pull that card out, but, but, you know.
Because, no, no, they changed how they were doing variances based on, the state rules came down.
There are other jurisdictions, I'd be interested in your opinion. My, the other jurisdictions that I am aware of don't play this card as frequently as we do.
Some places have done a use permit approach for things that are not, where you don't have to demonstrate a hardship. I think what we've found here, though, is that in, a variance in theory is for a property that doesn't share, you know, that's, it's an uncommon problem. And in fact, what we're finding here through the analysis is this is a common problem with the, the lack of symmetry between the code and what's the built environment. So in a sense, the real hardship here is the code itself for about a quarter of our properties. And so one of the questions is, you know, you've really, there's kind of a broken code here. The code doesn't work well for these properties, and it, it really kind of incents you to, provides an incentive to say, take the house down, build the new house behind the appropriate lines. And if that's what we want, then we should leave things the way they are. But there are issues I've heard from the community about tear downs and mansionization, and typically when you take down a smaller house and replace it, you get a much bigger house. Also, you get into issues of trees and lot usage and that kind of thing, and change in the neighborhood. So I think what we've really got, the hardship is the code itself at this point doesn't match up well with the built environment in certain parts of town.
Well, and, and that would be my sort of part two, which again, we could do in a more detailed work session, but because it's my opinion that what gets very tricky about this is, is that people have, the issue that I like to always use is people start talking about the other guy's siding, you know, he used cheap siding, we have good siding, he used cheap, you know, so they really want design issues. The one that I've gotten a lot lately from people is asking why we don't do something about garage, you know, front-load garages that face the streets. So I think my concern, it seems like you have a real problem here, but what we're, but what gets, but, but the catalyst to this is people don't like the design of the, you know, they're, they're not against the McMansion as much as they are against the person's aesthetic choices maybe. And I'm, so I'm just sort of curious how you get through all this.
Well, one approach that could be, if we have a future work session on this, is to have the AAB involved, because they have the architectural and design expertise. It could be that you'd put something like this through the AAB for comment on a, on a design. And that might get at some of the, you know, how does the proposed building fit in with its neighbors, and is it, is it well-done in terms of its design? So that, that could be a possibility, and perhaps in a work session with, with the planning commission, we can invite the AAB and get their perspective on this. I did want, though, for you all to be aware of the disconnect as we do the analysis, and a work session to talk about this in more detail is something that would definitely be appropriate.
Yeah, we, I think we definitely need a work session in the future. I don't want to drag this out too much longer because I know that Mr. Meeks needs to go to bed soon. But I do want to say that, so what I am understanding right now, that this current language, this 48-142, exists in our code, but no, does not involve the front setback.
Correct.
And so what we're talking about here is expanding the current code to include the front setback, and add in the planning director in with the zone administrator for the decision.
And reducing the height.
And reducing the height. And I think reducing the height is actually a very important component of it. I think most neighbors would be happy to see a non-conforming front setback remain and be able to build up from it as long as the height doesn't get too high, because height is a lot of what people have a problem with. I, I do actually have a problem with cheap siding, fake stone, and too many bizarre gables that don't make any sense, which seems to be a really big design thing for developers when they build on spec. You know, I, I think we have to work through a couple of different scenarios, maybe in the work session, we could work through maybe some specific house and really look how the effect is, because, I mean, I'm, my lot's conforming, my neighbor's not, most of my other neighbors are conforming, so the question I have is, okay, so what could that person do? And so, but he's non-conforming on a, on a corner lot, so his problem is his side, he has, does not have two front yards. I have two front yards even though I'm really on a curve, not a corner, but, okay. But I can live with it. But, um.
We'll give you a variance, don't worry.
Okay, well, it's interesting, he's actually on the corner, but he doesn't have the corner setbacks. I'm on a curb, but I have the corner setbacks. But, yeah. But one of the things I think before the, I think we do need a work session, I would like to work through some scenarios, and so we can see what the effect possibly might be. What's it like if it's one non-conforming house on a street of conforming houses? Would, how would that affect maybe their view, or is it, you know? I think when it's a whole street of non-conforming, when we're talking greenway downs, it's a no-brainer that we should just fix it. I, you know, I don't think that getting a variance, you know, it's a difficult, but I do understand the hardship issue, and maybe that's something that we could look at with the BZA at some point and understand where they're coming, but I understand that this is a legal thing, and that, I know, and that's what they pull out. But on the other hand, they, you know, that's what's going on. I do think also, before the work session, I'm not sure by state code, are we allowed to put the planning director into what is basically a variance situation? Is, is that allowed? Because there are some real specific code about how BZAs operate, how variances operate. And I'm not saying that we might, should do this, but we need to make sure that that's allowable.
Okay. And again, this was, this would be looking at how you'd treat those non-conforming structures.
Right.
Not requiring a variance, whether you'd allow something to be done administratively or not.
Well, I guess, you know.
So we'll, we'll check into that.
To me, you know, having approval by the planning director and zone administrator is kind of administrative variance, rather than going through a BZA for a variance. So I just think we need to make sure, before we have a work session, let's just make sure that that works okay.
Sure. And there may be a role for the AAB in this, which.
Right, definitely I see a role in the AAB, because I think design is a big issue. I think, and I think the best value of this is D, the addition of D, looking at heights. Because if something is going to be non-conforming and therefore maybe closer to the street, closer to its neighbors in some sort of way, you definitely don't want it towering over them. Ms. Rogers?
Uh, yeah. I'd just like to say, as someone who had to go through some process when I was doing some building, even, even if you are familiar with the process, it's still a very.
Horrible.
Well, it's not horrible, it's, it's just intimidating. And then to bring another board on to that, I think is excessive. And, and, you know, when you're dealing with the AAB, you know, they have definite style requirements that they, they think, and, and I just don't think that the place is, is in a residential redevelopment. Commercial?
Yes.
But, you know, even here, as you said, you don't know if we can bring the planning director in. I mean, I thought that the planning department, that it was a rule that we didn't get involved in, in residential property unless it's redevelopment of a development, no, a townhouse development or something. So, you know, I just don't know how that would work. But I'd like to see another hand in there other than just the zoning administrator. But I don't, I don't think we want to bring too many things into it, because if you have to keep going to these hearings, by the time you actually put the front porch on your house, you're a basket case.
Well, maybe the discussion with AAB can be about tools or other ways that, you know, that doesn't involve that. Ms. Hockenberry?
Thank you. A couple of questions, when you come, or requests, when you come back for a work session, could we have a different GIS map that you could actually understand instead of the Rochard block, you know? No way can I tell the conformity versus the non-conforming.
We can do, we can do.
I mean, that's, that's like, whoa.
Yeah, we can do blow-ups and look at specific neighbors, you can get a better feel.
So we can just, you don't need to print it, because that's expensive. But at least could we have it, so we could see it, because I can't make it.
Yeah, this was, this was to give you a view, a picture of, you know, there's a problem and it's throughout the city, but we can do, we can blow it up and see it in more detail, kind of street by street.
Right. And then, then the other thing, back when the planning commission and council, back when we were considering pipe stems and all that kind of good stuff, I think, I think there was a height regulation that was adopted for the R1B lots, that had an average of the height or something other like that. And I think we adopted that, so that should be recognized somewhere.
In other words, changes for any substandard lot, the heights were reduced.
Yeah, it was a substandard lot.
It was for substandard lots, and it was because we were seeing the standalone townhouse kind of look, and they were trying to like bring the houses down to a reasonable proportion, so it's about, it's about proportion.
It was all proportion.
Proportion to the lot.
Yes.
So there is that with substandard, but, I mean, this is a little separate, because the lot itself not, may not be substandard, it's just the front setback is non-conforming.
Yeah, but with the, the R1B with the smaller lots, that does come into play with the heights of things on those lots. And, you know, we should take that into consideration.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I think we should work through some scenarios. How does this affect a house on, where it's just a front setback is non-conforming? How would it affect non-conforming that's also substandard? I'd just like to see a couple examples of that so that we could just see what it means.
And we showed some kind of examples, but they're not real life examples in your packet, and we can do some of those, try to look at a street where you've got conforming and non-conforming, and what, what could happen as we go further down into it.
And I think another thing that comes up quite often, and Ruth was just mentioning a porch, I know that's been a line of contention with remodeling of a lot of the older houses, that people want a, more of a front porch, and they don't have that capability within the setback and everything. And I know that's been discussed way, way long.
And that, that has changed again over time. Through the different ordinances, it's an important piece as well.
Yeah, yeah, because that's something that comes up quite often.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate all your thoughts on this, and again, thank, if you have others as we go forward, love to hear, hear from those by email or otherwise.
Just one quick question. The idea is we're, we're trying to churn our way through some of the ZOAC recommendations, so we'll, we'll get this together, send it to council. Have they passed anything that we've sent them on ZOAC so far?
Well, actually, the.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just, I honestly can't remember, and I, I'm thinking the answer is no, and I'm hoping it's yes.
Well, I think Greenway Downs is the one we thought we'd get through first, if I remember correctly.
That's, that's one that we took to them, and they wanted us to have another work session, which we're open to do with the community. And I think there generally was support for that idea, so we've just got to find the time to have those meetings and bring that forward. That's one, that's probably the biggest one in terms of, and we've also talked about the T1 and the building heights, and combining the T and the, T1 and T2 zones. So we've, we've done some work on that, we, we need to find time to bring it to the Commission and continue to work on that as back through council.
But you're correct, because I'm, we, we have looked at a lot of these, but we have not had one go through council yet. So it's, I think we all kind of at one point decided Greenway Downs was the one, but we also wanted to move forward with the change to code about commercial buildings being at least two stories. That was another one that we really wanted to do soon. So, right. And at one point, we went through, remember, and we broke it into what people were most interested in, and we were talking about sideways walk with, well, as well, which we could align now with the new PED plan, so. And, oh, no, we did do this, didn't we? Changed violation provisions of the zoning ordinance from criminal to civil?
We did that.
So we did one.
Okay. And that also did some changes to fences which were buried in ZOAC, there was some interest in fixing, doing some things there.
Right. And then, and obviously, we're gonna, we're getting, we're moving forward on the overlay district for Greenway Downs, so that's a good thing.
We did do the Commission's, one of the Commission's concerns, which wasn't necessarily on ZOAC, but it was the drive-through ordinance which was changed, that was on your work plan last year.
Any more comments or questions from Mr. Snyder? So we'll look forward to having a work session on this where we can go into a little bit more depth. And so now we're on to approval of minutes on March 5, 2012, and which was a fairly short meeting. Did anyone have any changes for that?
I can.
Okay, Ms. Rogers?
Yes. On line 112, where it says, "The chair of the Board of Zonings Appeals is opposed to the legislation." I, I don't know if he was opposed. I think what I said is, he expressed some concerns about the legislation that I agreed with, so I don't want to state his opinion, just what I had heard from him.
Okay, so that's one correction. Anything else? Can we get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna go forward with the minutes as amended.
And two abstentions down here, Mr. Meeks and Ms. Hockenberry.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you, guys.